Good afternoon. I'd like to call the March thirteenth session to order. At this time, we have a special on school calendar options. It's that time of year that we are putting out our draft calendars for feedback for parents and staff. So, we made live a survey to go home. We did an alert call message out last night and have posted on Facebook, social media, Twitter, our webpage, sent it in an email to all staff. So, every bus driver, custodian, all the way through to the staff members, received the survey. To date, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-two responses on the survey. So, we'll gather that feedback from parents, perhaps make some adjustments based on the feedback that we receive. The common thread that seems to be coming through in some of the comments thus far is that they love the two Christmas week, two weeks of Christmas, obviously. And if we could try to make sure that we align as many of the workdays up together so that parents weren't having a Wednesday with their elementary kids as a workday, a Friday with the high school as a workday, and so on. So, those are seen to be the threads right now that kind of are consistent in the feedback that we're receiving on the calendar surveys. But overwhelmingly, most of them are very much in support, saying, "Looks great, works for us. If we can finish before Christmas break, we'd like to do that." So, there's been, we just got another one, two-hundred-and-fifty-three responses in real time, yeah.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-three, that's good.
That's good. Um, are we still having that extra time? So, we built in that time with our, okay. So, I was wondering about the option of putting in one or two non-days toward the back end of, well, for instance, this year, we haven't had to use a lot of our days. And so, it would be a sweet little surprise for teachers and students if they had a non-day sometime now between this January and Easter that's never going to get here.
Sure. So, the only thing that impacts is, of course, you have to bump back your start date or you have to bump back your end date if you add any more days into this calendar. So, you have two-hundred-and-fifteen on the guide.
Unless we get the change and we can do the...
Well, you still are going to have to have two-hundred-and-fifteen days, staff working days. That's a finance issue and that. So, that would impact. So, if we throw in a non-day, let's say in October, in case we have an early hurricane.
I was not, I was thinking, we have enough to cover everything. I was thinking more in the back end of the calendar.
Yeah, so it will still impact your end date. So, then that's going to push back. You won't be that Friday. You'd likely be that Tuesday or Wednesday. So, then do you hold graduation the following Friday after you've really been out of school for two days? So, those, I mean, we can look at it, it just, it dominoes.
Yeah, no, that doesn't work, but it just would, um, yeah.
And as it is now, how many minutes extra do we have added into the calendars?
So, it varies for each of the different grade levels, but I can tell you, because I've probably touched the high school calendar a thousand and one times, it feels like at this point, um, we have, give me one second to pull it up. I have both JP NAPs and instructional hours as well as the high schools. So... Roughly, we have about four days buffer.
Four days for the high schools.
If I'm, if I'm, you know, remembering correctly off of what we've drafted up.
And elementary as well, or?
I believe, and I, I believe we had eight buffer, we had eight, if I remember correctly.
And this year, we had some extra time built in, but not as much, correct?
It's about eight.
And we haven't had to...
When we got the waiver days for the, when we got the waiver days for the hurricane, we were going to claim two of those back, three of those back.
Three.
I carry my three. When those came back, that took us almost back to a reset, and we still had, I think, six of the eight left.
Well, I know, so we're, we're in good shape now with the elementary, right? We've got lots of time. So, I know springtime's here, and I know there's lots of studies out now talking about how we need to increase recess. So, if we have extra time on books, is that maybe something we could look at? Giving our little kids a little extra recess? I know it's not in the calendar. I'm talking about in the current calendar. Do you see what I'm saying, Dr. Lewis?
Um, yeah, we can, we can experiment.
I mean, now, there's maybe fifteen minutes a day, twenty minutes a day, and there's lots of studies that say they need more time. Elementary principals might agree or disagree.
We can talk about that. Yeah, we'll bring it up at our next principal's meeting.
And I noticed, I, I really thought that teachers had to have a set number of workdays.
Two-hundred-and-fifteen.
Okay.
In their whole calendar.
Okay. See, I, I was, I thought they had to have, like, workdays, so many.
So, there's a set number of required, like, there's a maximum number of required workdays that you can have in a calendar, not to exceed eight.
Eight.
Yep. And then, you have to follow all the federal holidays that the North Carolina labor force recommends. So, we have all of those in the calendar. Ten annual leave days are required, which are built into the calendar. And then optional workdays, I can't remember off the top of my head, so I'll have to go back and look in the policy. We have eleven on all, well, not all of the calendars. We have eleven max on the K-8 calendar. High school has a different amount, and JP NAP does as well.
Well, when I...
To get to the two-hundred-and-fifteen.
When I looked at the high school calendar, optional workdays were nine, required were five, and a total of fourteen. When I looked at the elementary calendar, they had a total of nineteen. Is that because of the early release Fridays? Okay.
Again, keeping in mind that some totals two-hundred-and-fifteen.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
For everybody.
They all have the same start day, end day, except for JP NAP.
So, I think I heard you say, required workdays are not to exceed a...
That's correct.
What is the other, how many are required? Because it's called required, so I'm trying to figure out.
There's not a set number that you have to have it. You have to offer at least two, in which, I think it's two, in which staff can take leave. So, two have to be at least optional in a calendar.
Because they get annual leave, and that's the only time they can use it.
They can burn it, that's correct.
And cannot use it when the children are there.
The legislature finally cites that you're out of dictating starting and ending days. Would we be able to modify these if they did it effectively for this school year?
Sure. We could go back into another version of the calendars. I mean, absolutely, it's possible. I think that that's going to require a lot of prep, because that impacts buses tremendously and their start times. And you're talking about folks that probably have summertime jobs in order to make ends meet, and we're now going to say, "You've got to come in early and do it."
Good point.
I, I think we can look at those things, certainly, but I think a jump this year would be, parents have already booked vacation rental homes and things like that, so I, I don't know that we should jump right in if we're given that until the following year. Now, I will say, on our calendar survey, our very last question asked, if LEAs are given calendar flexibility, would you be in favor of, yes, no, or do you need more information? Because, I mean, again, I couldn't type the whole thing out that says, "This is what this would mean." And, and really, and truthfully, at this point, eighty percent of folks say, "Yes," or "I need more information." Only fourteen percent say, "No." That's huge.
Could you also look at, I know we talked about last year, you know, we pretty well got high school covered. I, you know, I'm hearing lots of good things from teachers there about having adequate time to plan and do what they need to for their students. But on the elementary level, we don't have a workday in every month or an early release, just something where they can do their big block of planning time. And, and if we've got eight extra days built into their minutes, then maybe we've got a little more time to work with where we could give them some of that.
And I think the only months that we don't have a workday are the months we already have extended breaks, Christmas and April. They're the only two months we don't have a workday built in, and that's because we're going to be out for at least a week, if not two, during those months' timeframe. So, we, you're, I mean, it'd be like, "Hey, you've got a day off," and then next week, you're off for a week.
I, I understand for, you know, from that standpoint, but I'm thinking of the teacher having some time that month to do planning, you know, big block of planning time. So, if you could just look at it, that's all.
What was the first thing you said, Janet, too, about looking at? I'm sorry, I was writing it down, and then I stopped to...
Recess.
Recess, okay.
No, I don't want recess in the calendar.
No, 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 but that was what you talked about. I'm just trying to make sure.
I just want you to look at this year. We've got a lot of extra minutes left. You know, we had extra instructional time built in, so, um...
And we did not hit our averages this year that we had previously. And when the state gave those days back, and we haven't had, and we've got them out winter.
Right.
We've been in good shape, so...
Been fortunate.
The, the quick way to get to more, to what you're talking about in terms of extended, some more playing time for teachers, which we tacked on a few more minutes of the school day, you could build it in.
Well, in this proposed calendar, I believe we have eight. I think Mr. Stefanik said, or you said, eight extra days, whereas high school only has four. So, that's just where I'm coming from with that.
Was that?
And that's because we have early release. I mean, we lose time because we're going to that Friday early release day. So, we don't have as much vague time because of that.
Right.
But we can also, every week, say, "We're going to go full day, we're going to go full day."
That's where, that's where that, so if you added five more minutes to the day, that adds four extra days over the course of the year.
Wow, five minutes.
Five, so if you added five more minutes, that would give you those four planning in.
So, we don't need to give the required or optional workdays at high school as we do with the K-8 schools because we have the early release days, is that what you're suggesting?
That is correct, yes.
And then, um, don't, at least, I think, if I'm not mistaken, at the elementary level, don't they have, like, planning times for instruction during the course of the day or what? Not just a, not just a workday, don't they have that, like, blocks of time to plan during the week?
Every day, they get forty-five hours.
High school does as well.
So, I'm a little perplexed still as to why we need to leave early and run more buses and cost more money and hassle to make that happen. And I'm not saying it's in particular purposeful, I'm just saying that I thought it was going to cost us more money to provide less service, and I still think that. So, that's why I'm out. And I think it's been proven that we're, it's actually costing us more transportation-wise. And I don't, why don't you understand why we're doing it?
Well, I think that, one, I would offer, I have an opinion on it, obviously, because I made the proposal. It was, it was my idea to start that there. And I think Brian and his tenure now at high school, we actually had a conversation today about it as we were at East Carolina recruiting new teachers to come to Currituck. And I would venture bet that the staff would show up wholeheartedly to express to you why it is important and the difference it's made in their ability. Because when we say you've got planning, an, an individual math teacher might have planning first bell and never gets to sit with their other math teachers at all during the year unless there's something special planned after school or during another time. These Friday days allow that teacher to sit with every other math teacher in that department to vertically plan and align curriculum. And it, and it's so powerful. I watched it happen at NAP when I was principal there and watched what a difference it makes when staff have that time to deliberately sit and plan. Because we can say you do it in eighty minutes in isolation, but it's so much more powerful when you're sitting down with eight other colleagues and you're all on the same page, building that consistency. We talk about teacher A using this, teacher B using this, and you've expressed, "We need to be doing the same kind of things," and that time allows for that to happen.
Okay. And I can appreciate that. I just want people to understand the flip side to that. Where you're going to get a gain, you might have a loss. And so, we have to run our buses based on the state's efficiency rating. And every time we're not at a hundred percent, when we're running more buses than they think we should, even though I disagree with that, we are basically penalized for dollars. And so, because we're running more buses to accommodate that, it has an adverse effect on the busing at other schools. And I'm sitting here wondering, is that really the direction I want to go? Because I understand that if I want to pay for more teachers aides or teachers out of local money, we can do that if we choose. But what we can't do is we can't say, "Hey, we want to spend another five-hundred-thousand dollars and put a few more buses en route to reduce the ridership time and make it a more pleasurable experience." We get penalized again, twice, for that same amount of money. So, I'm not so sure that I'm still very comfortable with the gain at one school at the potential detriment of the busing formula, and we can't utilize local funds to offset it. And it's, it's, I, I don't doubt what you're saying is a benefit. What I'm saying is, I have a problem still where we're having to bus small kids for an hour and a half from one portion of the center of the county to another portion of the center of the county. And I'm talking about from around Corolla over here or Knott's Hollow over here. So, with that being said, and because we can't allocate local dollars, if we did it, we'd get about one point five to one or two. It takes us about two dollars to capture what one dollar should catch because of all the negative ways that it reflects on the study. Am I, am I correct with that? Okay. So, we're paying two-hundred-thousand dollars right now roughly, plus or minus, to not perform a hundred percent. And if we wanted to spend five-hundred-thousand dollars out of our own money to try to change that, we end up paying another hundred and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars as a, as, as, as a penalty, if you will. They don't call it that, but that's how it reflects in the money.
And so, I think your argument's spot on, and we, we have to do what's right for kids and staff, period. And the problem is, we're getting penalized when we make decisions that are that way. Case in point, your transportation formula. I think early release Fridays are good for staff and for kids because of what's going on in the building. When we make a decision like that, then somehow we are penalized on the backside by a funding formula that says, "Because you're doing good things, you're penalized because you're not running as efficiently as you possibly can."
Yeah.
So, I think that's the problem.
But the problem I got is, it's not just penalizing that school and that portion of the budget. The problem I got is impacting all these other kids throughout the system. That's why I'm wondering, does that one school have a need that's more important than the other schools? That's all. And, 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 and on top of that, I, I still don't believe that you can get two halves to make a whole. I think in education, I think, you know, two-half days don't import the, 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 the impact of one full day, but that's just my opinion.
Is that the only thing that impacts the formula in a negative manner, or when we bus children to COA, is that another negative?
COA is reversed.
COA is reversed.
What they do is that there's a formula, and I don't know if Matt knows all the pieces to the formula. I haven't.
They'll, they'll tell us everything.
They can tell the whole formula.
They might have to kill it.
But, but the bottom, yeah, but the bottom line is, is that you're supposed to transport students with the fewest number of buses.
Most students, fewest number of buses.
And, and, and an extension of that is, bus the most students possible with the fewest expenses, is what it's supposed to be. So, anytime, any type of exception happens, it, it can impact. You know, anytime you have a route running that, you know, has a half a bus, you know, full of students, but you're saying, "That's the way that route just needs to happen because that takes care of these neighborhoods."
Right.
If they, they'd be on the road too long if they picked up any more neighborhoods. It's good for those kids, it's good for their education, but transportation looks at every bus as exactly the same as every other bus, and they fit into this formula. And so, that's the way they do that. So, this is another one of those examples. If you're running the buses close to full capacity at lunchtime, but then you're coming back, and I call it like a summer school bus schedule, you're running the summer school bus schedule in the late afternoons for the kids that stayed after for intervention services, or I believe here, it's even a, a student activities time on Friday afternoons. Anybody that stayed after there that utilized the bus service in the afternoon, that's an extra route, probably not going to be a full bus load, you know, when they're running it, and so that's a, that's a ding to the efficiency rating.
And look, I didn't understand all that before. I didn't understand that we gave bus drivers a raise and had a negative impact on our efficiency model. I had no idea. Uh, that's not. We're trying to get other workers and pay them a better wage, and we get penalized for that. So, I, I just feel like people need to understand that, and that we're facing a lot of financial struggles anyway, but when you have things like that, that really make the ability to improve the system internally, locally, if you want to, is really restrictive. And so, being, we're already faced with that, doing things like that, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent. I'm not comfortable.
You know, and I think we had a proposal last year when we were doing calendar development that had the K-8 schools doing two early release Fridays.
Yeah, yes. Well, or rest days, it was something.
That would line up more with that, so that, it would make it so that you're only running that route.
The old literature said that Fridays weren't as productive.
And I appreciate that. But I, I'm not even comfortable with it at the high school, though. I certainly wouldn't be comfortable with it at elementary and middle schools. I think that we put on a new part share on families that have to work and be there to treat their kids or find earlier daycare. I think, I find a lot of problems.
Back to the workdays or early release for the elementary, and I know what you said, that they had the holiday in those months, but same thing with the high school now. You know, they have their early release days every month, whether it's a holiday month or not. So, I think if we could at least do early release day. That's just my thoughts, maybe nobody else. Maybe you have other comments, I'm sorry. It's all my thoughts.
I think you both make valid points.
Yeah.
I can see both sides. Um, man, I don't know if we know, is that an accurate figure, a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand-dollar ding against the efficiency rating?
Not from just that. We were talking about collectively over our rating at the same rate.
I'm trying to go through the numbers in my head. They do a comparison of what, how many people have signed up to ride a bus versus how many people we count riding a bus one week out of the year. And, I mean, we did do the recount this year and gained some ones, so that was helpful. But it, it, it's so complicated, it's hard for me to set off the top of my head. I'm not sure.
No, it would probably take an act. But to get, to get them to really look at that formula that they use from the state and to see some of the common sense approaches that they need to make versus just throwing out a formula, a percentage, and, and negatively impacting us in such a way where it's detrimental to our budget.
That letter was sent, right?
It does have, they're ninety-six and ninety-seven.
Yeah. There's a local bill there by Representative Hanning to, to look at that. And my understanding of it is, is that it, it adds a guaranteed percentage to, to the base of the formula.
Yes.
And so, that would help alleviate any other inefficient percentages in our budget.
It would cover that, I thought, with that letter, that was concerning the, the size of our county and the, the distance only. I did not think it would cover things such as early release and the transportation impacts that that would make from our early release.
No, it's, it's the whole, it's the whole formula. There's a calculation, and from what Representative Hanning said, was that the way the calculation is now, is you give an efficiency rating, and then every district starts off, add ten percent to the good. So, then you get your efficiency rating, and they add that ten percent to whatever your final total is, and then you get your final number. What he's trying to do is, he's trying to raise that, that starting point. So, what I heard was, he's trying to raise it from ten percent to fifteen percent. And so, if we're sitting at ninety-one or ninety-two right now, our efficiency rating not doing anything would automatically jump to ninety-six or ninety-seven, and then that would cut down the, as, as Mr. Karadik, what we look at as penalty funds that come out of the local budget. And so, it would, it would make our local contribution that much less.
Okay. Very good points. Anyone else?
We have a different topic, similarly related a little bit. The amount of rest or the amount of sleep a student gets probably directly impact the alertness that they have to learning. And I know that some schools in Virginia, haven't they looked at changing the starting and stopping times?
Yes.
And I know some of our elementary kids get up real early to get here. Do you think it would be worth polling the parents to see if they may want to try to modify the school day?
I think the ones that get there early is because we double up the buses. So, we have some getting there at seven thirty.
That study also shows that the elementary kids are the ones that do better in the morning, early morning. It's the teenagers that need to have that extra sleep. And so, isn't that what Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, they're looking at moving their start times of their, their floppy, actually, or in their elementary times and their high school times?
They're letting those that go to sleep earliest go to school earliest in elementary, and those who stay up the latest go to school later in high school. In keeping with literature, it suggests that, again, you have to take care of the teenager as far as start times being later, whereas the younger...
Yeah, if you can't get them awake, they can't learn.
That's right. That's right.
What, what are the start times for high schools in Virginia?
Well, I think Chesapeake will be going toward a high school start time that'll be nine to nine o'clock.
Nine.
But there are some high school divisions in the Commonwealth that, as a high school student, you're on the queue at seven-twenty a.m.
And we start both high schools at eight-ten or eight?
Eight oh-five to eight-ten. I think their early college is eight-twenty.
Yeah, eight-twenty.
So, really, they're lining theirs up a little bit more like it is with us.
Right.
Yeah, they're actually changing theirs.
So, they're really at eight-fifteen to eight-twenty. I've seen some of them in the Norfolk area that they just were talking about tonight.
But we still have elementary going in at seven-thirty.
Not, but some of them, like Jarvisburg is, is eight-thirty.
Because they double up buses with...
Because they share buses with Griggs, yeah.
Chopper is seven-thirty.
And Moyaw's seven-thirty. But then they share buses with Mills.
Yeah. It, it comes back to the, to the buses, the transportation, a lot of those.
I think that was a financial issue as well, because long ago, we had buses for every school.
We probably didn't have that transportation formula either because we had whoever needed to ride the bus in that community ride the bus, and that was it.
It's been around a long time, that formula.
Has it?
Mm-hmm. But they've been sort of cutting it back, because everything gets cut more and more every year.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Superintendent Stefanik, would you like to review Policy Thirty-Six Twenty-One?
Yes, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about Policy Thirty-Six Twenty-One, Student Initiated Non-Curriculum Related Student Groups. To paraphrase that, Policy Thirty-Six Twenty is about school-sponsored groups, and Thirty-Six Twenty-One is about student-sponsored groups. You've got the policy in your packets with a suggestive revision in, I'll call it orange, because that's where I see it, but I'm not sure it's officially orange. But we, we talked to the secondary administrators, and we tried to get around the feeling that there was some contradictory language in the policy. And the contradictory language revolved around the word participate in the meetings. And then, the student, the school employee is there and is to maintain order and protect the general welfare of the students involved. We suggested that we take the word participate out of the restrictions and then add in assure compliance with the Student Code of Conduct. But we sent our suggestions to the attorney. The attorney said that it's crucial that the word shall not participate in the meetings, meaning the content-type discussions of the meetings. He said, "Because that aligns completely with the Federal Equal Access Act." And he said, "So, the school employee is not supposed to be participating in the content-type discussions of these student-sponsored groups. He just, he or she is just supposed to be there." That's where the word however, the exception is, that they're supposed to be there to maintain order, make sure the students are following the Student Code of Conduct while they're in these group meetings, and protect the general welfare of the students involved in the meeting. So, our only suggestion then for the revision would be to add assure compliance with the Student Code of Conduct, and that directs the types of activity the student or the staff advisor or supervisor has with that group. He said, "There's a statute, and there are controlling cases to define the difference between participation in group activities and supervising the group." He said, "They're two distinct roles of the staff member."
Any discussion?
I, I have concerns with this, not because of a particular group. I just, I think it's a little vague. a little vague saying that, you know, we have to allow it regardless of the content of the speech at the meeting, that's one part. And I, I just, I don't know, if we, we might have our hands tied, will we have to allow a club in the future that is one that may cause profits? I, I just.
Well, if you don't allow the club, you better be ready to pay a lawyer to go up against the A.C.L. view.
And see, that's what I'm saying, if, that's exactly what I'm saying. So basically, with this policy, no matter what the student-initiated group is, we have to allow them.
Basically.
And if you don't, you're gonna have to shut them all down.
So that's, yes.
So that's where I'm at with it, kind of, because I'm looking at it like, it's not, it's not, well, actually, I thought it said, the other one said the school sanctioned, is that what the other one says, which I'm not holding?
Yeah, yeah, school sanctioned, school sponsored.
But this one isn't supposed to be school sanctioned, because the other one's school sanctioned, however, you gotta get students seeking to establish a voluntary non-curricular group, so she seek approval from the principal. And then on the fourth line, it says, the superintendent shall develop regulations and procedures consistent with this policy and state and federal law. And then in the previous paragraph, where you mentioned that, or you mentioned, it would, the, 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 the employee would assure compliance with the Student Code of Conduct. So if we gotta hear the Student Code of Conduct, and we gotta get the approval by the principal, and you're gonna set the regulations and procedures, are they really free to do what they want? And so there's all this jargon up top, even mean anything, or are we conflicting? I don't know. I'm just saying, it, it seems to me like we want it both ways. We want to say we don't have anything to do with it, and we're not gonna sanction them, but yet, they gotta get approval from the principal, you're gonna tell them what regulations and procedures, and they have to adhere to the school code of conduct, so can they really have free speech?
Which would happen if that's wrong.
What, I mean, what are we doing here? I'm not, I mean, I'm not taking one way or the other, I'm saying, I think it's got a problem with it.
We're doing that anyway.
What, yeah, but if, even in, in life, if you do a club or you go to do something, if you're not following the law, then it doesn't matter, that supersedes, and that's, I think, what we're saying with this, that, that our code of conduct supersedes the other...
Well, wait a minute. So you're saying that the code of conduct and all this, whatever regulations and procedures that you've developed, and his approval, they're all gonna supersede their freedom of religious, political, philosophical, and speech? Is that what we're saying? Because I don't see it saying that, but I'm wondering that, quite honestly. I'm wondering if that's what we're saying, but we're not really saying it, so that's where I have a problem.
Well, it's kind of like the law, we have to follow the laws of the land, whether we...
Well, I think of it like the rules that we have in place currently, that's what we're following already, with all the clubs, we're doing that already, so it's not really changing anything.
This, this to me is basically saying, we, any student-initiated club shall be permitted.
Right.
Any.
Right. Yeah, because you can't discriminate against anybody that wants to form a club, that's their right, and so we cannot judge them or say they can't have this club or they can't have that club, we just have to make sure that...
They're gonna be safe.
They're running it in an orderly...
So we can have a religious club.
You, you have an FCA.
And we could have a, a club that wanted to support a political candidate?
Yes.
I think, that's clear.
As long as the teacher, staff members...
Until it becomes an issue of safety for others within the building.
Yeah, I don't think anything would change it.
I don't, I don't see where it says anything, and I, I'm not disputing its intent, but I don't see where it, it says that to me. And I understand where you're going with that.
It's nothing to do with safety.
Right, but that's, that's, it's not a here, but that's...
Well, I'm not saying I'm not for safety, I'm not saying that at all, and I'm not saying I'm against a club or for a club, that's not what I'm saying, I'm trying to understand, is the law of the land is at the state and federal law that we're adhering to, are we adhering to the code of conduct and the rules and regulations that you develop also? So what I mean is, we're kind of narrowing down what the law of the land is, and I want to be clear, because what is different based on the rules in this type of club than a school sanctioned club? I don't see any difference, other than that.
And, well, that's, that's basically what the first paragraph said, when this, when this came in, student-initiated clubs are supposed to have the same...
Freedom.
Same freedom or, or same rules as school-sponsored clubs, that they've got that listed in the first sentence. And when, when I look at these, Dr. Matney, correct me if I'm wrong, when, when the students go to seek the permission of the principal, and approval from the principal, that's basically like an informational meeting, that, you know, that there, there is an interest to have the club, they're letting Dr. Matney know that we want to start this club, so that the principal knows all the activities that are happening inside of the building, and then the code of conduct comes in, and it's just, that's like an explaining phrase for protecting the general welfare of the students at the meeting, that no student by going to this club, whatever that club is, is gonna be in any more danger or, or an unsafe environment than it would be in any other thing that's happening at that school.
Yeah.
And that's what that is, and so we have to, our school rules are weird, are within state law, and they are within federal law, and so all those things come into play for, for these types of groups.
I'm guessing that curriculum-related student groups have a positive impact in mind, like, for instance...
Science Olympiad.
A what club, environmental club or...
Science Olympiad.
Science Olympiad. So they have a purpose, so to speak, to do something positive. So would student-led groups have to have a purpose? I mean, do we have any curriculum clubs, curriculum-related clubs, that do not have a positive, do not have the idea to have a positive impact on our students, helping them to become good citizens?
Yeah, we can't, we can't get involved in that.
But is that the purpose of curriculum-related clubs? I'm asking.
But I'm not getting the students' views, because if, if any of you wanted to start a club and a friendship club, you just want a friendship club, you want to meet and share good thoughts, positive energy, whatever it may be, that's your positive.
Positive impact.
Well, as far as I know, okay, so when it comes to student-led versus school-sponsored, school, like, the school can't take sides on things, like, it can't sponsor specifically Christian.
Right.
Uh, group, like, that's really the distinction.
But you could initiate that.
Yeah, a student group can initiate that, but the school can't.
I see.
Well, would Big Bell were to initiate a smoking club?
No.
No.
Wait a minute, why, why wouldn't they?
Against the law?
Against the law, even though they weren't doing it? They would just have a club about smoking? It's against the law to talk about smoking?
Oh, not to talk about smoking?
I was saying, well, I was going, I was going back like thirty years, where smoking
rooms at, at some of the schools.
Designated rooms, yeah.
I was going back a little bit.
I was talking about, just like you're talking about other things.
I'd say it's very...
I think the point of talking, like, that you have to take it to the principal first to get approval, and then you have to adhere to the superintendent's regulations and the Student Code of Conduct, is so that, like you were saying, how there has to be, like, you feel like there should be some type of purpose, I think that taking it to the principal establishes that sort of purpose, so even if you don't really have a purpose in mind when you take it to the principal, I think that that little meeting that you would have with them, bringing up the idea that they would help you to establish what are your goals, what are you trying to do, and that those goals would have to adhere to the Student Code of Conduct and the regulation from the superintendent, which would definitely filter out any clubs of that nature, like a smoking club or anything that would be against the code of conduct or any regulations that are obviously...
Have we had any proposed student-initiated clubs where the principal said, I can't go along with that? Have we had any?
I never had one asked to, I, I, I had, I think, the Surf Rider Club and a gaming club, those were the two that I think I've never had experience with.
Dr. Matney?
No.
Um, are, are we, um, can anybody tell me a club that they could talk about anything that they wanted to basically, that we wouldn't authorize? Can you give me an example? That we wouldn't leave, that we failed to deny? I just want to know, because all the statements that were listed, I don't see if they're not actually doing the act, it's illegal, but they're talking about it hypothetically. I don't understand how you could deny them of that. I want to know, what, what, what club would, would come to mind that you could tell me that they would be able to sit around and talk about?
I, I'd have a hard time coming up with one. I'd say it's hopeless, like, we've got a formal, like, the students...
I'm, I'm not saying that they're all like that, or even one out of ten thousand's like that, I'm trying to understand, you're saying you gotta take it to the principal, get their approval, and I'm sitting here reading this, and I'm not seeing how that really has any authority, unless they're acting upon what they're talking about.
Well, and, and I think, I think the distinction there, and that, that's why I said, the, the, the meeting with the principal for the approval, and, and any principal in there is devil's student club, the chime in if I'm wrong, you're, you're having a discussion about the startup of something new, and so you're establishing that there is an interest that this starts, you're establishing that you have a supervising staff member, you know, that will be there to maintain the safety and well-being of everybody involved in that, in that process, and, and I think the hardest thing for, for anybody to, to have to, to deal with is to, to remove yourself from making a decision about whether you're okay with that kind of a club, or I'm okay with that kind of a club, because with these things, we're, we're not allowed to make a, a, a judgment about the, the topics involved in the club or the purpose behind the club. Uh, it's just basically, they're informing the principal that they want to have this club, they're basically saying that they're going to follow, you know, all the rules of the school and the Student Code of Conduct, and they're not gonna harm anybody in the room, and then the topic, the actual topic is not, is not supposed to be a, a, a make or break item in the decision.
But when and where the club will meet, is another major thing that the principal needs to know. And, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your comments. I personally think, um, if the school can't have any input over the topic, I feel like then this school not have that during the course of the school day, I feel like the school might allow that before after school on the weekend, but I think, because, as you just indicated, you couldn't think of one topic that they couldn't have a club about.
Uh, well, you've got the distinctions within, within speech, you know, you can, you can talk about most topics, but, uh, you know, all right, example, I very much doubt that you can have a pornography club.
How are you, how are you doubting?
Because that's, that's technically vulgar speech. Vulgar speech is a...
Well, they've got books in your library right now, excuse me, at the Curta County Hospital, they have some of that language in there, so they'll be truthful, very graphic language, and so I'm, I'm, I'm questioning that, and I'm not sure, uh...
I think it just comes down within reason, the likelihood of, of, of a group of students coming together and thinking that they're going to form a smoking club, or any of those on, on the line topics.
What if, what if we had a group that wanted to do, uh, I mean, there are clubs that would be offensive to certain groups, I mean, I think about the silent Sam at U N C, you know, that was offensive to a group of students, Carolina man over there, right? So what if we had somebody that wanted to establish a silent Sam club, you know?
As long as I, in my personal opinion, as long as they're not trying to force what they're saying on a someone who doesn't agree, or putting their opinion into a place that is physically or mentally or personally injuring or harming someone else's well-being, then it should be fine, so to have that type of club.
Well, in a way, if it's, there's a group of people that have that opinion in our school, instead of them being scattered and sharing it to the school and maybe harming people, having a distinct place for them to speak amongst themselves on that topic, would be safer than telling them, no, you can't do that, because then they're going to go out in the school and then maybe harm someone with the, that opinion.
Clubs should be safe spaces, people should, I think that if anyone was gonna form a club on terms of something that may possibly be considered bad, it would more be like dealing with it, like, instead of a smoking club, there, somebody might form a club to be like, I have a problem with smoking, I need to talk to people about it, or something like that, because they want to be school somewhere where they can be...
And not necessarily a club that, I, I, I just am thinking, there's controversial issues and topics, and what would that do to our school atmosphere if we had clubs formed around some of those controversial issues and topics?
I feel like it should pull our students' culture together, because I don't agree with Mallory, but she's in this club that she can share her opinions that we disagree about with the people who do agree with her, and I can discuss the things that I agree with, people I agree with, we can then come back and be friends, because we have other people to speak with that topic about instead of just one another.
I'm surprised we're here.
Mr. Stefani, you said our school attorney reviewed this, right?
Yes.
And it is in compliance with the state and federal laws?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he said that he didn't, he didn't see that putting the Student Code of Conduct phrase in there changed the intent of the policy one way or the other, he said he was fine with that, if he felt that, that added some clarity.
Our attorney says that it meets all the educational requirements, state and federal, I would ask the request, do we move on?
And even though, it is our policy, it is our policy, we adapted it from the state policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Dr. Lutz, would you like to discuss our summer school plan?
For Sandy, I'm just... Provide backup.
Sorry, that's stupid, good. So the state is giving us the option that we can, if the board approved, and I present that approval to the state by April first, that this summer, we could offer a summer school option for four through twelve grade students who didn't meet their proficiency level three or higher on their ERGs or E R Vs, um, because of lots of variables, we've tried to be very careful about how we worded the purpose of it, so depending on our scores at the end of the year on those assessments, and depending on where we are budget-wise, we would just like to have the opportunity to possibly have this opportunity for our kids in grades four through twelve who didn't meet, and it would be totally voluntary. The state is saying is that if we present this re-engagement with the curriculum, we can test again at the end of that summer school opportunity, and their higher of the two proficiency scores would then go into our school calculations for our, our school grade, the growth would remain the same, whatever the first growth score was would stay the same, so we would need more approval to be able to say that we...
So just two weeks, basically?
We would have to have the scores before July fourth, and we thought it would be better to end that Friday before, since July fourth is in the middle of a week, and starting right after the workdays ended.
I think it's a good thing for faculty members that would be involved, because they would still get a summer break, as well as the kids would too. Now, no transportation, that may hurt.
Well, and, and Dr. Lutz is gonna talk a little bit about our skeletal budget, but we were trying to partner it with summer reading campsites, so that if there is a way for us to work that out, that we might be able to help out a family who was having trouble with transportation.
So we would still have the ready-to-achieve summer reading camp?
Summer reading camp is separate, we have not gotten our allocation yet, but loosely budgeting, if, if we decided to do this, using that as a, kind of a barometer for what our cost might be.
And we didn't have this last year? We didn't offer anything to this group last year?
Well, Renee can... Well, Renee can speak to the high school that they were using.
We al, we always offer credit recovery opportunities for students who fail to meet in credit, to take theirs, because it's online, it doesn't require transportation issues, that type of thing. So we've always offered that, I think what's enticing about this, and, and this used to be, I don't know if you remember, I remember when I was teaching, they would allow us to remediate and retest, is what they called it then, so you had to offer X number of, right, you had to offer X number of hours of remediation, you could retest a kid and their scores could then count back into your accountability model, so it's very similar to that. This proposal's now allowing schools to remediate kids, especially those kids that are on that border who were two points away from scoring a three, you know, those, um, kids that fall right on that line, so it's just that opportunity again to re-allow students to come in, get some skills caught back up, some one-on-one attention, you know, small group setting, to get, uh, some help, and again, I think to, this is just, we have to have a plan if we even wanna entertain the idea of offering it, so that's why Sandy's under the gun of having to submit a plan, we may say, we're not gonna offer it, cause we can't make it work feasibly. So, but if we want to, we have to at least have a skeleton plan in place, and we can then say, yes, we are able to offer.
No, I tried to be very careful about the wording, so that depending on how our scores come in at the end of the year and funding, that
Yeah.
we're not.
What would be the cost of this?
On the, on the low end, I would put it at ten thousand, on the high end, twenty-five, and that does not include busing.
And the state will pay how much of this?
Nothing.
Right. They, they call it an opportunity, not a mandate, so there's no money attached to it.
And is there an option to charge a fee for?
That would be in a larger proposal to the board, if we were to go this, this is just a skeletal that we can offer it. We wouldn't do anything until we brought forth numbers and a budget.
It is something that we could do.
I do know there are other places that do that.
Yes.
And charge, you wanna recoup the credit in a secondary level, you can pay.
Especially the second, yeah, the secondary. Now, Renee, you mentioned we've always offered the credit recovery online for high school, what does that cost us?
Well, it's part of our subscription for all year long, so it's not any additional cost to us, and that's why, again, it, it's easy in a secondary level to say, you can repeat English one to get that credit back, cause it's just a pass fail, it doesn't get a grade, you don't have a teacher of record assigned to any credit recovery courses, so I don't have to pay a teacher to come in and work with a kid, it's different in credit recovery, so that's why secondary's a little bit different.
But you do have a teacher on the site?
Yeah, we do provide, we pay the site owner, the staff member to be on site to help with supports, in addition to, at the time, we were all helping students through courses, they'd come in two days a week, come sit with us, and we would help them through their course as administrators.
Okay.
This would just be an opportunity for fourth through eighth grade that haven't had it before?
Um, I would say so, I think we should have it, and I don't think we should let ten or twenty-five thousand these dollars and afford a seven million dollar budget, hold that up.
For the county.
But, I'd also like to understand, when you say twenty-five thousand dollars on the high end and ten thousand dollars on the low end, and I'm not, I'm bleeding, I'm not concerned about the twenty-five thousand, I just wanna understand where that number changes.
Right, and, so, on the low end, I was picturing a, uh, a reading and a math teacher at Jarvisburg, reading and math teacher at Shawboro, so, about five teachers total at that point, or maybe one, 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 three, I, it, it's based on a minimum number of teachers being able to serve the kids, and a maximum number, so if we had higher numbers of kids, let's say at the middle school, the six-eight, we'd offer a science teacher, two math teachers, two reading teachers, what's that?
No math, sorry.
Not math, I'm sorry, two reading, science.
Math also.
Cause you, we won't get any, we won't know who passed the mail, based on.
This year, we won't get past their score.
We have indication based on what they do in the classroom from the teachers, and they have, they were to offer something anyway.
And we could still offer for, particular for those kids that we know.
Yeah, I'm not just concerned about fixing the school for the school, I'm more concerned about fixing the kid, so.
We would, we would just need to add that wording in.
Yes, I'd like to, if they're okay with it, but also, lastly, uh, I think, um, that the only potential negative I see is that offering it for free, which I think would be very kind, but the only potential downside to that, that I could think of, is that sometimes if you have to put forward something, you're more out to participate fully and complete, and I'm not suggesting that what that is, but what I'm saying is, when you have, um, a vested interest, if you will, you're more out to take, uh, the situation seriously. I don't know how to convey that a hundred percent, what I am trying to say is, I'd hate to have a whole bunch of kids enrolled and only a smaller portion take it seriously, thus, uh, the crowding of the class and the, um, harder time for the instructor, whereas if, it was a little bit of contribution made from the family other than transportation, maybe, eh, some of that would be controlled, that's all I'm saying.
Is it possible to have a site in North Carolina, since they're so far away?
They do run a summer reading camp, um, out there as well, but, um, their busing and their food, their part of the, um, summer feeding program is, is just different out there. We would have to figure out how we've been able to accommodate that to students.
Maybe a theory will run, and they could come and go to Shawboro.
We could potentially make it work with our reading, cause we actually, the ratio to students versus how I staff that for reading camp is pretty strong, we could even look and be creative with the people that are there. I think that would be different.
Well, if we could offer it in North Carolina, um, with the math, I think we should try, um, and I, and I, and I understand, they're gonna say, well, you know, you're trying to, spend more money, no, what I'm trying to do is, uh, spend money where it needs to be spent, save money where it needs to be saved, and I'll go ahead and love the service, and I think this right here is gonna go a long way to elevate our love of the service, so thank you for presenting. Do you have a ballpark idea on how much transportation would be?
Um, it costs us almost ten thousand dollars for reading camp for transportation.
Is there any way that we could utilize a reading camp?
That's the site, that's.
Ideally, yes, we would like to, but as I, I was the director of one of the sites last year with double buses, and we talked about the long bus, um, times, we have community stops, so, um, we were trying to cut down on ride time, but they were still, um, and Mr. Mullins can speak more to it, they were still really long ride times to get them, um, to the reading camp because of our geography and, um, trying to get everybody to them, so a lot of times, even though people were initially set up for buses, um, their parents, um, wound up trying to carpool and, and get them up to the site, because it just reduced their time on the, on the bus, but there was space.
Now, the summer reading camp, that's state mandated.
This is separate.
Do they pay for that, the state? Okay.
And I'm, I'm high, I'm high on those, those figures, I'd rather be high than give you lower numbers than, than come under it, so, um, I did a lot of budgeting off of looking at reading camp, and we paid teachers for that, too, the other part, uh, with, with the, um, in terms of that flexibility, also depends on the number of teachers that I can get to participate and to provide it to, I, I think I can, you know, get a smaller amount, the more people you get, sometimes we're shaking the tree.
I'm assuming what you're willing to know, so that you're able to start seeking out, uh, oh.
Nevermind, I'm assuming, that's the charge, you can start, we sent our reading camp last, out last week, searching for reading camps, so if we wanna move forward with this, um, we'll, we'll get together and start talking about how to select who those people will be as well.
I'm okay.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great idea, I'm just worried about our budget.
With the summer reading, do they supply transportation, what they?
Yes. So transportation is a part of that for summer reading also?
So we piggyback on that, that would not be.
So we would piggyback on that.
And that's making the assumption that we can do that.
Depending on numbers.
Um, yeah, and I'm, 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 I don't like to assume things, I'm assuming we could use those buses, being that we have to send one back.
Not there anyway.
Based on last year's numbers, there, we did have somewhere in Shawboro.
I'm assuming that you would still do the, the, um, high school, um, stuff through our online, and just have, like, somebody there to.
But we can also offer it with staff, you know what I mean, we could, we could switch it to put a math teacher in the building to work with students in math. Cause the need's not just at K eight, it's at the high school too.
One, one thing you can consider when you're talking about, you know, put some skin in the game, you know, on the parent's side.
I agree.
You can, you can have a rate for the, the instruction, and then if we're not allowed to utilize the same buses, or if our funding for the bus is prorated about how many students on the bus for summer reading camp, or how many are summer school, you could put, you could put a transportation fee, kind of like public transportation, you know, you get on the bus and you gotta throw some money, uh, you know, to the bus driver, and so, um, you know, you could say, for the summer school, X amount of dollars, and then the family gets the choice of either transporting their child or paying this fee to ride on a daily basis, and so you could split it up that way, and you could get some of your transportation money back.
I'd also have to flesh through a little bit, because when I was running this preliminary, I did not include math, I was working off of reading and science, so I, I need to rework this a little bit, just.
I think it's great, I think we need to, uh, do that, but that's a long course, for the, the game is longer.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion that we go out of, um, our work session.
So, ready?
Any discussion? Do you need a adjourn?